Tonight is City Council's special meeting. Today is Thursday, June the 26th, 2025, at 6:00. I appreciate you coming tonight. I should work by and hear the word prayer for. My gracious, how we follow, thank goodness, that we come together. As the President, she helps us to work together and move the city in your own to forward a positive way, Lord. We'll be a good testimony for you and all of you saying, in Jesus' name, our brand. Amen. Please, please. Your bodies still building? Thanks, ladies.
Good night, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and just as we are.
All right, we're going to carry in for ordinance number 2025 dash 02, budget fiscal year 2025-2026. We're opening up the hearing. Everybody wants to talk or do you have a motion to close the public hearing? The ordinance number 2025 dash 02.
We sure we don't want to wait five minutes.
Don't wait in camp, we're going to be signing. We have a question.
Okay, I make a motion that we close our public hearing on the ordinance number 2025 dash 02, budget fiscal year 2025-26.
Second. Mr. Craig. Questions carried, thank you. Updates, discussions, actions, Mr. Hawkins, approval of joint lease, defending engagement program.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, as you know, we're trying to get an agreement by which you all are satisfied with the wording in terms of that, of those, of this set agreement between the City of Darlington and the Family Engagement Program Incorporated. We have reviewed it last time, and these are now, this document now shows the additional terms and phrases that you wanted to be added to the agreement. There is a question, though, on the bottom of the agreement they just sent back, who will take care of the grass? I just texted the Recreation Director, Mr. Andrews, and he says he feels like they should do that. And I know why, because he has a lot more on him to take care of.
He feels like they should?
He feels like they should, they would do that.
He doesn't lease something that takes care of your own grass.
I agree. But whatever you all feel on this, and once you enter into the agreement and are satisfied, then also the next item would be to approve the accepting of the PAR grant for the $50,000. And then they are rip ready, wearing to go to get onto this project. We're trying to pull them back a little bit because we got to, we can't get the cart before the horse. And we want you all satisfied with this lease and the agreement and feel good about this going forward. And everyone knows their roles to play, if you could say that.
Oh, Vanessa, Ms. Hawkins. I hear the phrase several times in dealing with this, you're putting the cart before the horse. What do you mean? What are we doing ahead of?
I have some bills on my desk already.
Right.
And we have not, y'all, it was my understanding that the council wanted to agree to the lease agreement, which I do agree should be in place. And we accept the PAR grant, and then we start making content to contractors and incurring costs, is where I'm at on that.
What bills, what bills have already occurred?
They, in order to complete the inspection, they had to drain the pool, shock it. Not quite sure if you just let the water out while you need to shock it, but Mr. Andrews explained that's what the bills are about. And as I cautioned you all before, you got to make sure PAR is okay before we do any expenditures. But we feel sure that they will be okay. They're just waiting on us, they've approved this for the month. I just don't want to have a hiccup, that's all.
And I'm glad you were explaining that, because that was it. It was just to be in line for my understanding as what D. Heck was willing to do at what time because of later, and what their schedules and things.
This accelerated timeline, I did it.
So we're trying to be in compliance with everything that we want.
I think that, I believe that once you sign it and we get the agreement signed, and you allow me to sign it and accept it on your behalf, they can, they can go, working with myself and Mr. Andrews, we'll let, you know, I know, we know what the timeline is, they want it this summer. So we're, summer is here, it's hot, as we all know, and, but there, you know, we don't know what else is there that needs attention. And that may be something we'll have to come back to again about and let you know, other than a update on it.
I've just got a timing issue. I remember when I was young and I came to remember names that came and spoke to us in council. They seemed to be very business oriented. And they explained that just like we had to agree as to what was a proper lease, they, once we presented it to them, they had to present it to their board of directors and get approval for it to be signed up on. I think when it says that the nonprofit's responsible for all the maintenance and premises, that includes the grass. But I don't think we can accept the PAR grant until we've approved it and then their board has approved it.
And I think what's happened is he called him by phone today. After speaking with Mr. Andrews, when we say, hey, we need to make sure we got things in place. So I believe that a meeting was had and an agreement came to, and then he signed.
Have they seen this?
They did, yes, he signed it.
Did have to sign?
It's already been signed by them. I wouldn't have done it that way, normally my organization signs it in the consent to you, but they already signed it, yes.
Now, my question is, is your question, you're saying we don't know what helps and holes. We're saying the council's pretty much said that they're willing to do the $60,000 program, which would have to match $12,000 or $12,500 with that. What happens if it comes up and there's more additional? You said that they may come back to us a little bit, but we.
Well, I do know that there was.
If we hold them to come back, but it's in their court.
It's in their court, and you can make that, you know, make that point to that, that's fine. You've only agreed to the 62.5, meaning that, you know, once those, those are incurred, we can receive the 50 back. And we don't, we have not identified any other funding for this project at present. So I would assume that if it is something that beyond the 62.5, in order to hit it open, because that's all they want to do, they just need to want to get it open. And that I, my, my understanding is there may be some more additional investment that they can pull together to assist with the project after that. And that's what I would expect. And then, but, you know, other than a periodic update to you guys, I think they're clear on where you are with the $12,500 coming out of 62.5.
So we have a vote where we can do the first bullet.
We got a question. All right, just the other lady weigh in on this one. Been talking with attorneys about the insurance policy on this, and we are additional insured on that. My understanding is if we still own the property, if there is an accident, we can still be liable.
We can be, we can be sued. There may be a determination as to whether we are liable or not. But if we are an additional insured on the policy that they have, the funding for any liability comes from that insurance policy and not the insurance reserve. So there's protection, but there's absolutely no way in the world to say that we can't be sued.
Right. If to sue, there's insurance companies for, say, a million dollars, they can sue.
Well, you can ask for any dollar amount of lawsuit if you want to, you have to establish what the damages are. If, if their policy was not sufficient to cover, then our insurance reserve fund policy would come in, it would be the back of the policy.
I've got a little bit of a problem with that, you know, the capital issue, not the certain media carries.
Something, something happens with splash pay. We can be sued. Something happens with our garbage trucks.
It could be a lot of the limit, too, so it's what the county could be, is it splash pay versus?
Not really, if, if somebody sued you and they put, if they are suing you for a billion dollars, I'm gonna sue you for two, as he said, they could put any amount to it.
I don't think it could drown on splash pay.
It ain't about drowning, you saying about the lawsuit. And we are telling you that we, the city can be sued for any of it and at any amount that the person doing the suing.
But the amount would be limited on splash pay versus.
No, there's no limit. I mean, I don't know whether, I don't think you understand it, too.
Just a little more liability with $12,000, 27. Somebody may seek for a million dollars for something, a total concrete pad.
You want it back? The damage can be just as stacked.
All right. Yes, we can sue, we can sue.
So do we need a motion here?
Do you have any other questions you had on, Mr. Phillips?
If we're going to enter into the lease with the motion, are you fine with the lease going straight to the bill? Are you fine with the way we're running? They put all the one thing?
There's only one thing in there that, that seems to have come out from the first draft, I see, and I didn't realize something is out. Previously, in addition to talking about insurance, we had a language in the proposed lease that said that the nonprofit would indemnify whole harmless to the city in any and all claims. I do not know why that's not in here, but I would propose that it be added back in. One thing I think of is, as it was being retyped somehow in the back out, eliminated. But I think other number six, there should be indemnification language saying that, or somewhere else saying that the nonprofit should indemnify and hold harmless human individuals to the million dollar claims. And the same was in our first one, I watched, allowing this one, and I apologize, I didn't pick up.
I can send it back to Ms. Kate, to the back, and she can. I think she sent it to me a few days ago, so there's nowhere I can put the clause back in there, so I can get with her to add it back. And I'll, I'll contact Mr. Collins down and say, just re-sign this.
So. All right, yeah, okay, of course, I'm, I want to, I want to know then, can we approve this with that, like we have done with the, with the additional that? Because they have no problem with any in the first way it came and with the new way it is, if that's what I'm asking this town for. I want us to kind of, since it's worthy, if we, yeah, since it's about worthy, if we can put a motion in to approve this lease with the additional, with the adding back of the original wordage that was in it, that said about indemnifying.
So your motion would be, if I could restate it?
Yes.
You, you're giving the city manager, myself, the authority to sign the contract entered in, the city into a lease agreement with Families Engagement Program Incorporated with the addition of the indemnify clause to section six.
Is that your motion, Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
I'll say it.
Mr. State, I'm finished.
The only thing that I would add to, to that is that since we are making this as a motion, that we use the date of June 26th, 2025 as the late date. And that term of lease will commence today's date and expire five years. So if you'll put six, what is it, 6/26/25, 2025 in those.
You want it written out, that's what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Written out, okay, like he has here, 6/26/25.
Yeah, it's just, you know, since you, you'll be adding that other language, if you'll just go ahead and put those dates in there.
Okay, yes, sir.
Anybody can give proof, Mr. Phillips? Chart, six. Questions carried. All right.
And the next item is, in conjunction with this parallel to it, is to allow me to return the approval to accept the $50,000 PAR grant for the Darlington's one.
Now, on the last one, can you, when you get it approved and signed, can you sense that I hear that?
The grant?
Of the, of the lease.
Lease, oh, yes, sir.
Can you sense that?
I make a motion subject to the lease being signed prior to the acceptance, that we accept the PAR grant and we land $50,000.
I'll second that. Read, six. Questions carried. Approval of purchases related to operations, the seats, about that.
At your seats, you should have lunch papers. And they were mailed to you early on, early this morning. Looking at job quote one. I was like, I don't recognize that one. Every year, Mr. Boltright, if he can make it, he said he might know. He, the water and sewer department makes a $30,000 inventory purchase. So this is before you to approve $30,000 purchase of inventory. And it's mainly their brass pieces, things we wouldn't see, but it's the cuff lanes and whatnot that they can make the connections with the taps and services that we do. And that's so they don't have to, you know, run to whatever, they can just go to the shop and get what they need to complete a job. In most cases, this is depleted quite rapidly. And I, I will say, I asked them to try to break it up, maybe $15,000 and then in six months another $15,000. But the ability to get a better cost, better price for the, for these items, which may not only increase in price, but may be harder to get later. But this particular amount allows us to get better pricing. So there is, the Ferguson is the one he would like to approve. There is also one from Miller Supply of Laurinburg. And I believe the Ford meter box company, that was just inadvertently added to let you know what Ford meter box looks like. And then the Fortaline is the third company that we have before you. But he would like Ferguson as the provider. And I can talk through all of them, and you can do one acceptance if you want, or we can go one by one, however you want.
But all of this is what the department has, how they would all come in from water?
Water and sewer. Normally, water and sewer purchase a lot of items together. This is my understanding that it could be used in sewer, but it does say water on the top of this. And Mr. Boltright found the request of this.
I'm motion to approve Ferguson Water Works for $32,104.00. First year.
Second.
I'll second.
Milliken? Mr. O'Ree?
Yeah, okay.
Sir, questions carried. Good job, quick two.
We have discussed the mini excavator a few times, and we did talk about this a little bit last time we were together. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, he would like the Blanchard, which is a cat, catapult brand. But you also have a Bobcat quote and a John Deere quote. But the request is for, out of, out of this year's money, to do the micro or mini excavator. This amount is 68,0136.
And these are funds that they already have in their budget?
Right, yes, sir. We, we feel like there's enough left at the end of this year to do these, the trailer. The 30 is already in OAM, it's not a capital, but this is out of what's left.
Okay, so they have the funds to cover this, we're not.
Yes, out of what's left. And that was the deal.
The reason is 68,000 requests, but Bobcat, I don't know.
How do I say this delicately?
I just didn't know whether there was something special about one of the products, or she's the other.
Service will be better than the bottom.
Last one?
Now, service will be better than the bottom.
Better expect quality, better serve, better experience as a user, that's, that's what I have, from what he.
There's a better truck, right?
And we don't, we want things that we can easily fix if it's a repair, that people are in the business of repairing. There are some items that we have, as time goes on, less and less people maintain those or have the parts. So I imagine it's his experience. But if you want to go with another one, they need the product to make these cuts smaller and keep the damage to the citizen's yard and then. And it's, it's a little bit more than what a shovel can do, and it's way too big for what a backhoe would do. That's kind of wild, maybe. And if you'd like, if you put it where, if it's the, if it's the Bobcat instead of the Blancher, you could do that.
But what do they want?
Your motion.
I'll, I'll motion for the Blanchard cap. That's what they want, right?
Yes, sir.
$68,146.
All right, I'll second.
Milliken? Mr. Craig? Sir, questions carried?
So in order to get that item around town, they need a trailer, but he did not provide me with additional quote. And if he wants to go back, he can, or he could say up to a certain amount, you could do that. That's so that they can hook it up to the truck and move the mini excavator to where they're working.
So which one is that?
This is the top shelf trailers.
For, take that.
Yes, ma'am. It has a little bit more than, it's, it's got bumpers, it's got, right, don't bump up against the pins. And you see there in the explanation, you know, it has, has a gate and those kinds of things, power jack and the lot.
So, okay. My question may become, if this was, see, this is hard, are they delivering, we have to go pick this up, what's that means of applying this paper?
Oh, it has a line that says, if you want them to bring it, $600 in additional. And if you did confirm, he would, he want the Blanchard. So then that would make it 14. That's why I kind of offered up to $15,000. And if it's a light quality and, and usability, if we found something closer, we could get that.
But if we approve this, this is what he's going with, or you're just talking about getting a trailer?
He could get another quote, see?
Yeah, I, I, I would feel.
There's only one, there's only one quote that we could.
$600, it's just.
Oh, so that's why you were saying, use a number, in case we get it, and then we just go, you know, top it out of self, out of self.
And if it's more than that, we'll just come back to you.
So that he can have a choice, since we only got this one, okay.
And he's saying this is hard comparing because it's, it's important, I'm sorry.
You guys know how to say that.
He said that, that's a quality trailer, so it's probably the top of ours.
We'd like to get another quote.
Do you want to get them up to this amount? Do we want to pass something up to this amount?
Well, we can do up to amount, but I just, there were trailers, and then there are trailers.
Amen.
I'd like to.
I shouldn't have all those, those will move aside by side.
Just remember, this is a mound, you know, and check, put a figure in there.
All right, so I'll motion to approve up to $14,650 for purchase of trailer.
It'll be 14,150.
Yeah, yeah, I'm so sorry, $14,150. I was looking at some total, I didn't see discount.
And I would have said we should just print 15, if they look at something else, but okay. I'll set on whatever it is. There is a lot of these things, they call.
Mr. Phillips? Mr. Craig? Questions carried?
Okay, the next item is, the council approved, I believe in the fall, $310,000 for funds for new meters, and this is just one of those items. But it's $23,000 for MXUs, which are used, I believe, for them to read meters.
I'm motion to approve $23,7139 for purchase of MXUs.
Second.
Mr. Phillips? Questions carried?
Okay. Of course, I, I don't know about you all, but when it gets hot, your air condition goes on the point. And it's been explained to me, the corbels are going bad in. And this has been explained to me, the corbels are going bad in the unit that is cooling the top, uh, floor at Streets of Sanitation. Um, and that would be around nine thousand dollars to, um, replace those coils. But a new, uh, unit would be fourteen seven seventy-five. Uh, that cost is proposed to be shared between water and sewer. Uh, we have, um, gotten permits to read, the agreement that we could pay half of it in this year through June thirty, and then should you approve, hopefully approve the, uh, budget tonight, um, use expenses in next year for the other half for Streets of Sanitation, because we're at, uh, we're at the top of our budget right now for Streets of Sanitation. And there are some other, uh, bids there from Danies, uh, you, he, they want to go with the Adams, but Danies has been contacted, uh, as well.
Did any of them do, or how did this thing get bid out?
I think they just called him. And actually, we just, um, had some work done for the bottom unit, um, but this is for the top. Um, if you want, we can seek another, a third one.
If you may, listen, we're talking about him today, yes, but I don't mind doing that.
Okay, so I just know there's some darlings and people that do this kind of work.
Okay.
Both of these, I...
I think, um, the, when they want to go with, it came when, when we couldn't get anybody before, when they just started to, um, call him again. So we can get, I can get with, um, Lacy Shears coming up for that job.
In two thousand twenty, they wanted to replace the materials in three of the gyms, one hundred and five thousand dollars, I think, and we got a fix from one hundred and three thousand dollars. And I think we replaced it in the last five years. And it's fixing to get us back in.
Do we need to put a dump?
We need to check.
Well, I think, I think no one's like, uh, situated there now. If they get what they need, come on out, uh, right now, because those two ladies are over here, uh, in water and inspections.
Okay.
This is emergency expense, so she could have Spence on her own too.
So, but what do you say? I was trying to follow you up.
They don't want, they don't want to...
We're not approving either one of these, they're gonna get a third estimate from someone local.
But since it's an emergency, we don't, it didn't have to come back before us, is what you're saying?
Just whatever the, the best for the city. Yes, ma'am? Thank you. I think that's all the quotes. I appreciate it.
I approve a second reading orders, twenty twenty-five dash two budget, fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six.
Before going to, as a point of information, and you're gonna see that I changed some things, um, the, and I'm, then I'll go back to the general fund, but on water, sewer, you asked to seek a quote for the, um, Mr. Boatright just advised that AC quotes are hard to get. But I'll, I'll check with Mr. Jeff. Um, the building, so I got Mr. Roosevelt Scott to take a look at the water and sewer building, the blue building on West Broad. Um, and he told, I asked him for a quote, but he has something going on with another project off of Oak Street, I think it is. So he's been, you know, tied up, and he said he could get the quote to me, and his recommendation and, um, estimate on Monday. Uh, but while he, when he came to visit me in my office, he told me that he had looked at the water sewer building, and the floor and foundation is impaired and cracking. Apparently, one of the pylons, the, uh, steel pylons I thought over where that tree was, is sinking. Um, and he said that he felt like it might be upwards of seventy-two thousand dollars, um, and twenty to twenty-five thousand just for the floor, because he would have to get a jackhammer, and he didn't know how much was there, how many inches thick the flooring was, to get down to where that was, and, and then build it up. He, uh, he and I talked with, um, Mr. Boatright, and Mr. Boatright has said that he would like to do a forty by sixty. Uh, you could tell I'm not in building, because I thought twenty by twenty would be good to get that. Uh, forty by sixty, he's gonna come back with a quote for that, and a forty by seventy, um, he's gonna come back for a quote for that. Um, Mr. Boatright, um, had a letter for you all. Um, what did I do with mine? I think I shared that with you on, you know, justification for getting a new building. I hope y'all were able to, um, get some information from that. He proposes to get, uh, there's something called the marketplace, where people buy these steel buildings, but they just sat there, they're not being used or put up, and he, he gave me like, he might could get this forty by sixty or forty by seventy shell of the building, uh, for less than twenty thousand. And then get someone to come in, put it up, put, put, set the doors, set the windows, and they could do in phases the inside. Um, however, I would like to see what Mr. Scott, uh, comes, comes up with, and to pursue that. Related to that, I took the money out of the O and M. One, because I need to balance the water sewer, two, because you have capital money available. So if we split it up, fifty, twenty-five, twenty-six, fifty, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and then anything else, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, over time, they could do that. So what we talked about doing is just, if you get the room together, you might can flush it and put the furnitures on the wall, but it'd be, it'd be already like there, and then we can add things like flooring and chairs and furniture later, which would probably be that twenty-five. So I took the fifty out that we had in there for, uh, this year, well, twenty-five, twenty-six. And we'll just use that over time, if you would agree to that. Um, it looks like we're gonna be negotiating and getting, and still researching this for a while. But because we're not, we're gonna use our money in twenty-four, twenty-five to purchase the Micro Excavator, I feel like we're saving the capital that way. Um, if it doesn't work out, I'll let you know, but I'll, I'll make sure before we order it, we have enough to cover it, without making, uh, the equity dip too far, uh, because we want to make sure we have, uh, money available and still flowing in from balance of water and sewer, as well as general funding for us. Uh, that said, I'll, if you'll turn your attention to, um, your packets there, um, I will, I was going to use, um, the screen here.
You're saying that you protect fifty thousand out of the security charges?
For the, for the proposed budget, we took it out. We should, we should go back to seventy-five. Go, okay. It's still in there?
It's still fifty thousand. Two, nine, one, two, two, two eight.
What page is that?
The water sewer line.
Well, any overage would go back into that sewer line, if that's the case. Uh, sewer line repair, I, they wanted about four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, and it's down to like three something, and it was my, if I had any overages, that's where I put it. Um, let's see. Apologize for that. So I've got four there, and I've got two there. Yeah, this is the line right here, this is a two percent, I was trying to see if we could do a two percent increase.
Sewer line, first line.
It is zero two nine one four, two seven eight C, and I believe their original request was five hundred thousand. Um, that's if they have time. We, we have, you know, things that come up, as you know, uh, some of you may know. Um, also, and you said it was, what line were you looking at there?
Mine was a builder repair, that's oh two, nine, one, two, two, two eight.
Okay, I had split between water and sewer, so I did not take that out. What I would suggest, two, two, two nine.
What page are you on?
The next page on line is out. It says water sewer, and the first, the first line, it says salaries of four thousand, four, four, four one thousand.
Okay, so I did take it out, see right there, there, it's fifteen thousand. Um, the second blue line is at two percent increase, so if you look at the one always to the right-hand side. Um, so I just, so we just left the seventy-five hundred, uh, for little things that they could purchase and, and get for, uh, a good call, a good price.
So the change has been already, it's been taken out already?
It's been taken out.
Oh, okay.
We left about seventy-five hundred in this one, it's usually not that much in given care at all. And so those, those repairs for building will come out of capital. And if we can get the price around one thirty or less, uh, we can do it in phases, fifty thousand each year in the last twenty-five or thirty, in the la, in twenty twenty-seven, and then... Um, you're looking at the water expenditures. Revenues will be on top, but these are the expenditures for the water sewer.
Is that the only change?
No, when I, um, no, and I didn't track my changes, I just cut where I could to get it in line. Um, but I did know about the, I do remember about the, um, building repair. Some of the lines, like this machinery, equipment, uh, for, for both lines, like, and they have, um, uh...
Fifty thousand also machines and equipment, they get a machines and equipment, they have ten thousand dollars.
Right, and so they're...
Miscellaneous equipment, twenty-five hundred dollars miscellaneous equipment, ten thousand dollars.
So, one of the things with water and sewer, they kind of work together. Um, and they may, they may purchase a piece of equipment, and both departments use it for water or sewer repairs. So we have got to work on making sure we allocate, uh, when we're presenting checks and paying checks, that we allocate them across all these lines. They, they may have, um, miscellaneous equipment three times, or machines and equipment three times, because it's in water, it's in sewer treatment, and sewer collection, so we gotta make sure that it goes to the right place. Um, these numbers might change, once we get the allocations correct, and they may need to go up. But what's happened is sewer treatment and sewer collection may not have much in it, uh, used at all, and all the water is about expended. So we talked about that when we're talking about budget, how we need to be a little bit more intent and purposeful in when we allocate, uh, the deals, and, and get together, kind of know where that's going, and make sure they're allocated correctly. Um, again, I didn't say at the beginning, this budget plan, this is a plan, a spending plan, and it can change at any time. We, I will, um, if necessary, bring budget amendments to you, if we find, you know, we're just not, they're just, it just didn't fit what they need for the activity. This current year, the spending is way different than it was last year. Y'all had larger projects and bigger things that happened, uh, and we always can come back and discuss and amend those and make it, make it more than needed. But I, you know, I believe that, I know that this is a good plan. It is not what everyone wants, of course, it is, I've cut places, um, they may, may have said, I would rather be to cut this line over that line, but it's balanced, uh, to the revenues that we could conservatively, or just plainly agree to. Um, Ms. Vincent helped me and assisted me with those as well. Um, and I, it covers your bonds, your, all your debt, it covers, um, a five percent of, um, that's why I had to take it out, because debt was not in there. Um, I found out to, that most recently, that some of the liability accounts have budget numbers on them. So Ms. Vincent and I talked about that today, we're gonna have to probably let it change, because they won't show up on your report for rep, for your expense report, your budget actual report. So we're gonna look at that, look at that, look at that, what we need to do for that. Um, so we had to make sure that this, this budget covers our, um, our debt, okay?
Machine, you got machinery and equipment, you got machines and equipment, some machines and equipment, you've got seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars total, those, those four lines, which you got...
And they tell me they need every, every one of those lines, so what, what's the difference? Well, there is a difference, and, and I, I said, well, okay, okay, we'll keep that in there, um, because they aren't meant for different types of purchases. And, and so on their word, that's what I'm taking, that they need both, both of those.
So when you talk about these additional line, multiple lines for pieces of equipment, as well as it being used for water and sewer, I think this is, will, that piece of software that we recently purchased, this, that software, when they put those work orders in, in the job, and what they use, that's gonna help you be able to determine how to take these funds on which of these lines, is that right?
Okay, and they say over time, it'll help us with our capital planning as well. Because we're tracking, um, how many times you patched this line, how much work you did to sewer treatment or the water treatment plant, um, how long that fine screen has been in there? It's past its useful life, we replace it this year, then we know in thirty years, we gotta replace it again. Some of those data points, uh, will be more available to us to make decisions.
And when they are purchasing a piece of equipment that's used for both, you'll be basing, you'll be basing, um, who's using it?
Right.
On which, okay.
Any, any questions regarding the changes, or, oh, and by the way, I want to say I did go back, um, and take out one month at the old, well, put in one month at the old rate for the insurance, and that did make a lot of difference. And you know, our insurance rates increased about fourteen percent, that was hefty. Um, and we spread that through, just by every single department felt that. Um, unfortunately, police felt it the most because they, they have the most, um, FTEs in that department. Um, but I, I, the way that this budget is, I, I just feel more comfortable with it than I've had over the last two months that we've been looking at budgets, or four months, because I started in February. Um, the expenses are there, and that, there's no way to keep it down. There, I mean, I was very much bothered and annoyed, but that's the way it is. It used to be 10%, but she said, oh, that used to be 10% that you could put for insurance, health insurance going up. Um, but there's some things we're working on, and when those things come to pass, we'll share those with you and let you know that maybe we bought these costs down. But there, the, uh, brokers working with some of our folks, uh, to see if they would go on a different type of plan. I won't say which one, but if they do, that could save us about 40,000, 44,000 dollars. Um, so hopefully that will come through in '25, '26, so that, um, we will, we will see that in this, in this budget, this upcoming budget year. But the insurance was a big, big thing. Um, otherwise than that, if it was something like, maybe they didn't spend but a thousand dollars, let's say employee training. Well, it wasn't employee training, because we, we wanted to go send our people. Professional services. Um, let's say, as you see on this line, professional services was at 35,000. Where that arrow is going there, I took five for that. Um, only because maybe when I looked at it, it was 29,000, and then, and then the year before, it was 15. So looking historically, you haven't used that much. But, you know, next year could be different. Um, but we're gonna talk and we're gonna monitor what we're, what we're expensing out. And if the T-line is not being used, I will come back to you and say, hey, we need to move some money to, um, the C-line for professional services. So those are the kinds of changes that were in this budget. Um, again, it was 5% for overtime. I have to, um, I was told after the last meeting that they always budget overtime, it's just not on a separate line. So Ms. Vincent will work with me, get it on a separate line, so we can see that separately from regular salaries.
And with, with the water budget you have here, you still including or not including the 500?
It, it is in there.
And what does that surprise you by getting to do that?
Um, she told me like 150, 160,000. It's like 80 and 80 something, it's 80 something and 80 something, according to Ms. Vincent. And this line here, so include it there, in those two lines. And there's also an additional $3,000 for the, um, rate proposal to put more restrictive tampering fees on, uh, the books if you go on our rate sheet. Because people are, I guess, breaking the lock and turning the water back on at times, or breaking the meter, and it costs us money to replace it. So there, um, that's $3,000 additional for that as well. And that's 3,551,988. And I also want to, I don't know if I mentioned this to you, um, Ms. Vincent and I both talked about, uh, the fact that we're writing off a lot, um, for our utility billing. Um, a lot of times, we have to remember that we can bill it, but we don't know if they will pay it, okay? And sometimes people leave without paying their last bill. Uh, so we're gonna start to see if we can either engage some other company that will take a percentage and get these accounts collected. It was way too much what we're, we've been writing off. And, uh, she wants to kind of look into it a little bit deeper, uh, with the staff to make sure, uh, that we can't collect it through set-off. And, you know, set-off always been getting about, uh, $2,000. It, we really need to kind of pound, not pound it, but pay more attention to the ability to collect for those who left us with a balance.
Are you saying that it's not billable through set-off? You can't use the set-off to collect it? Or that we use set-off and just aren't getting it?
It's only for those that, let's say they moved to a different state. You don't have a way of getting theirs through South County. If they don't do a return, that's the only reason they will be able to, um, capture that, capture that money.
Sure.
So, what do you say you propose to do about it, since that...
It's just a project right now that we're looking into doing. Um, so I've had a couple of conversations with Ms., both in our, um, office manager about it, and, um, we're gonna look into doing that. Along with what I mentioned about the, um, somewhat, somewhat of a roundup program to help folks who, uh, have challenges paying their bill. Um, I've done that in, like, city, and we're gonna kind of use that as a, um, a template to do here, to help. So that's, that's water and sewer. Any other questions or concerns I can answer for you?
Well, I do have a question on, salaries are pretty much the same. We moved the temp services from 100,000 to 55,000, and then the salaries increased from 398 to 441. From the 23 and 24 budget to this budget. So you shifted money from temp services, trying to hire more permanent full-time employees?
Yes, they feel like, uh, they really wanted four, but we put two in there. Um, and I, I understand the reasoning, because I thought this is how they were. So let's say there's a water line leak here, but you get a call for a sinkhole or sewer or something over there. They have to leave this job and go over to this one, instead of splitting up and having a crew go here and keep on this job. Or they make their minds up, this is what we're gonna do this week, this is what we're gonna take care of, and then an emergency happens, and they get pulled off the job. And so the, the reasoning behind that is, we have two crews that can do, uh, two jobs at one time. And I originally assumed that's what was going on, but that, that is not what's going on. They have to be pulled off, uh, jobs all the time to go take care of other, uh, emergencies or something that's deemed more of a hazard or more of a, a safety concern. They would have to leave that job to come back to it.
So this increase would prepare for two permanent, a full-time employee?
Yes, employee.
That shouldn't be correct, because you're, without the increase, your, your budget last year was the same amount, 498,000 dollars, which you budgeted last year for, for temps and for salaries. Correct. And this year, you're budgeting 496,000, almost less.
So... I was just saying, yeah.
The salary in temp services is the same, so you just move money from temp services and salaries.
I'll pull out my words, Chief.
23, 24, you had 398, that's what we did, 398,000 for salaries, 100,000 dollars for temps. And so you take the temp service for 55,000, salaries of 441,000. And it's a combination of 2,000 dollars less. So you're basically doing the same.
Right, and they said they were, they want to pull some people in that have been working, um, for over a year. Um, and some who are not in a position to come on full-time, so we'll work through that with them, uh, to get, you know, to get what's best for the city. Uh, Mr. Boatright said it was, um, maintenance crew and a project crew.
Electricity, um, 291222. Electricity, water. Was budgeted at 35,000, changed to 75,000. 40,000 dollars.
What's the number again?
Center customer deposits.
That's a revenue or expense?
It's 29, it's 291222. Electricity, water. 35,000 dollars is what we're budgeting for in 23 and 24. And now it's budgeted for 75,000.
220. 220.
220.
For, um, 914C. 914C. 220C.
914C is not on there. That's for salaries or...
Um, he said that's projected, that's what they feel like it's gonna be this year. Um, I'm trying to find that from when they presented that to you. I've only got, I got 9142C.
There's some projections for that number.
Right, and, and it may be because we've got, uh, new items coming online, like the new pump stations and what have you, with those, uh, C...
No, pump stations are the same, meaning sure, they've just been upgraded. So additional, should be additional fees in that, for the number. None of the extra that we picked up with the electricity, so we'd split it.
I'm trying to find the number, too. I believe Mr. Morris explained those increases, uh, maybe appeared before you. But if it's into the new year, if it's not correct, we can always change it.
Just underneath that, you got machinery and equipment, uh, 40,000 dollars on the whole budget, 23, 24, but, um, there wasn't a line on, or the new one, you got machinery. That's maintenance and services, machinery equipment, you got 60,000, 40,000, 60,000 machinery equipment on that.
Okay, um, Mr. Boatright texted me that the five stations are, are now on a dealer bypass, and when they get on to the, uh, grid, then those prices will increase. And what was line item just now that you were saying?
Machinery equipment was 40,000, they've, they've increased to 20,000, 60,000.
Yes, and...
That's line on 227.
Is that for sewer collection or sewer treatment?
It's, um, 22, there's 291222. I'm sorry. 27. 2912227.
He wanted, um, for the, for the, um, treatment plan, he asked for 50,000. It was 40. Uh, and for the collections, he wanted, um, 40. And I may have reduced that depending on where we were at the time.
All right, I'm, uh, plus it says, other operating expenses at the bottom, line number of 2912279.
Yes.
10,000 dollars.
So this, or this, or she doesn't include more?
It, it isn't, um, I think I mentioned that the general fund, direct services, I have that in there, but we're gonna create, uh, line items for, uh, water collections, sewer collections and sewer, um, treatment. So the 292354 that we found, uh, to, uh, share in the cost for account fail on those overhead activities, uh, and salaries, uh, it was put in that line. I did have it before last night, um, in a line by itself, just as a placeholder. So that's a placeholder. Um, Ms. Vincent and I talked about it today. I explained it. She, she, we will make a new line for the general fund direct services charge, because that is too much to put in the over, other operating expenses. So it will come out of there. So the 292354, I think is the number, is split between water, uh, other operating, and sewer treatment and sewer collection.
This is line on 2912279. Other operating expenses?
Yes.
10,000 dollars increased to 160,000.
Which one?
279, 2912279. It was originally 10,000, it's now 160,000. 160,827.
Okay, yeah, 160,827.
So what's, what's that report, what's the other operating expenses for that to go to? 291227.
Right here. I got 84, 164. Um, that's the sewer, I'm sorry.
29122.
Yeah, um, that's the one half right there. That's the direct services one half of it, of the 292354. But we're gonna pull it out of there, and we're gonna, um, accept for 20,000. So it's 140, um, 292354 divided by two. Water got half of that. We'll split the other half between sewer collection and sewer.
That's 150,000 dollars more, so you said it's another 150,000 on that?
The 292354 is almost 300,000, yes, sir.
And the goal is, your goal is to pull that 300,000 for the work, or to put it in general fund?
Yes. Now, we can split it another kind of way. We could do a, I mean, we don't have to put all that in water. We can put more of it in sewer. Um, and... Um, and but at this, or even install more, but at this point, um, it's gonna have its own line item. It won't be another operating, you'll see it as general fund direct services.
Gotcha. We got it, so you just, no more of this. We will identify where all money is, and not this overall operating expenses.
Right, well, let's kind of catch up.
Identify what that is.
Yes, okay.
That's, makes sense to me.
We're not gonna group it everything together. Right, and she did want that, that was gonna be too much to put in there, so initially I had it in there, I took it out, I put it back, I put it back in there. But you'll be able to see that if on.
This is your work.
Very good.
No? I need to know.
Public and Community Affairs, last time we were together, we said we were gonna bring it down to the original amount that we had in last budget year. It's still at the upward amount.
Which one?
Print, uh, P D Regional Transportation.
Oh, for the eighteen thousand, okay. Where you, you don't wanna give them the eighteen thousand?
No, ma'am, I don't wanna give what we gave them last year, remember? We talked about this last meeting.
Okay.
There we go.
Yeah, we talked about it, but do we actually agree to take that down to that amount? Cause we were talking about the rides being free and our people having access to.
Cause we will be without Saturday service, he said.
So why is that, when we're the only community who gives to them, and none of the other communities do?
He said every, our adjacent community double theirs, that's why he asked us to double hours. But I couldn't see doubling it to thirty-five, I, you know, I just put, I said, I'll put eighteen, and he said, well, you will not have Saturday service.
The county and Harts were both, I know the county and Harts were both donating generously, and they, um, and you can check their budgets online and see what they do.
They charge for services over there as well, we don't charge here.
Our services are, are free, but if we were to do that, we, I didn't call all of us saying that we agreed to that.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear one objection last time we were talking about it, I mean, it was said and then we were done, something, uh, something changed, um.
No, it actually just slipped my mind, I apologize.
It's all good.
It can, it can go on this line, this line if you like.
All good.
Or we can reduce, um, we can fix it. You don't wanna pay, pay them eighteen. It's, I don't think it's still enough to save Saturday anyway, cause he wanted double, he wanted thirty.
That's not, we're not in business to run nonprofits unfortunately. Is there any way to get this printout with last year's budgeted items? So we can see the difference in each category, so we can see what you've changed, cause we have no way of knowing any changes.
Okay, um. I can, I can reprint them with all twenty-three, twenty-four budget, budget actual, um. Yes, we can. I think you. You want it now? You wanna print it now?
I mean, I don't, unfortunately, yes, ma'am.
I don't need it, I've got my, it says the water.
She don't know what she's changed.
No, I'm not looking at it. Well, I'll just, I'll go in and cut to the chase, I'm not in agreeance with taking three-hundred thousand dollars out of water and store. And raising the water fees up one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, pour money out of it, um. We need to continue to increase, but I think there's, uh, no company like we do increase, but I have to understand things here. Well, at the same time, it's small, there's a lot of numbers that flip around that I'm not in agreeance with, um, to try and make things work, I don't know.
What that means, yeah, look.
We're, um, Chief printed it out once, I can see what the changes are, and then he's saying he's a little nervous about some of the rate increases and some of the changes in the budget.
I mean, the salary, my question last time, we're still the same, with no pay increases, uh.
I went back over, like you said, like I said I would, and it includes.
They're still higher than what they were, I mean, what are?
It, it includes, um. Without me showing it to you, I took what we are paying people now, and I just took their salaries along with their longevity pay and added it up. Did a five percent overtime, and if there was an FTE, add it, add it an FTE. We don't have, the only, I tried very hard to get recreation one, uh, but, but at, at any rate, um.
I mean, for example, the police department got, there's a difference, one-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars more this year than last year. And that's still counting what they were actually paid, but yet not hiring any more officers and not giving any officers a raise. My question is, first, one-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars. One-hundred-seventeen thousand dollars in the fire department, fire department's not getting a raise, um, and no more fire department employees. Streets department, ninety-seven thousand dollars increase, and that's just a salary line, that's not the other line.
If I understand.
Sanitations, a ninety-five thousand dollar difference. So I'm just trying to figure where the, where the difference, where that increase has come from, and we're telling, you're saying the, um, the pay raise and then the more additional employees. I'm trying to figure out where that number is.
As I understand it, what she explained to us before, correct me if I'm wrong, you explained this to us, you included, Chief Davis has not been fully staffed in quite some time. But just because he has not been fully staffed, she didn't remove those positions. Those positions are still there with their full salary, so that when he finds some qualified officers for us, their salary is already there. Is that right, Chief?
Um, is my understanding that last year, the budget, let's just say we had twenty officers, uh, when we were supposed to have thirty. Last year's budget was done for twenty officers. When I did the math, the officers that worked, there wasn't enough in the budget to pay the officers that I currently have. So last year's budget was for us being short.
That's not my understanding, my understanding is from me, you and John Payne sat in the office, and I begged for raises, and he gave them raises. And my, my interpretation was to cut three people, get that money to these other guys to help us, but he did not cut anybody, he still maintained. And what Mr. Luke Bill did, I don't know what Bill did, as John did, but let's just say that that was at the end, but there was, there was the money at for the, uh, streets department. Fire department, one-hundred-seventeen thousand dollars, ninety-seven thousand dollars in the streets department, and ninety-five thousand dollars in sanitation.
Okay, um, I don't normally do this, but cause there's no names on there, um, let's just look at this sheet right here, and I'll tell you what I did. Here's chief salary, here's, it's already been out there, so that's nothing new. Your three lieutenants, your six sergeants, your three investigators, your four corporals, your six patrol officers, five SROs. We took one out because we were losing St. John, uh, to the new school, uh, so we, I did take that out. It was one-point-eight last time, uh, eight. So there's the five crossing guards, um, one of the gentlemen are moving to a parking officer, part-time, you have a part-time EIO, administrative assistant. And the other five SROs, those are there, that's what they get paid up there, so, you got one, two, three, four, five. What is that, one more? So this one right here, I took out this one right here, the lowest price, lowest paid person on there at forty-seven, four-four-eight. I took that back out, that gives you the thirty-one, nine-thirty-five, these add up here, and then here, I added five percent. So that's the number, that, I believe that's the number, sir, and I can't explain it to you, no, no way, shape or form, that's the number. Here's your, um, seven part-time, thank you, sir, part-time firemen, your twelve full-time firemen, that's all their salaries in there, as it is now. That's all the part-timer salaries, as it is now, and then that is the five percent for the overtime, which adds to seven hundred-seventeen thousand seventy-six dollars. There's your volunteer, they're on a different line, your retirement, your insurance, took out the one, put it at six-seventy-eight for one month, and seven-point-six-five. Same thing for streets. Which one?
Fire.
This is fire.
So, okay.
Budgeted.
Curtis, I want to hear.
My question is, why, if nothing's changed in their department, why was it budgeted last year at, uh, six-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, if it was budgeted at?
I can't answer that question.
If we need to answer that.
Ask somebody where the changes, the change, it was budgeted for, you agreed to a budget last year for, say, you actually agreed to a budget for six-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five, is what was agreed on. There's no more new officers for, I mean, fire department, they come in with the fire department, and they said seven or seventeen, that's, uh.
That's just a five percent.
She just showed you where, she just gave you every person's salary, part-time and full-time. And instead of, before, they, she explained to us previously, they had not included overtime, there is a five percent. It did, they said they did put overtime all into one line. In one line, but you separated it. You separated it by department now, so it's included in there, so, okay.
They included overtime last time at six-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand.
Not, she said not in the same, they included it overtime for the entire, for everybody in one line. She's now doing what was supposed to be done, and separated it per department, so you know what you're paying per department for overtime, not a general, everybody. That's why it looks like.
Like an increase per department.
It is now broken down, as it should have been.
Five, five, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is thirty-two thousand dollars, so difference of one, seventeen thousand.
It may be, but what do you look at? If that's what she's saying, and that's, that the chief is not, uh, saying that that's not the case, if that's what they're being paid.
Fire department last time was six-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
And how many employees?
Five percent for overtime, then that does pass out.
But see, you only know it's five percent now because she broke it down, last time, it was all in one lump sum somewhere.
It's gone over one-hundred-seventeen thousand dollars.
But anyway, I'm, I'm still trying to see what it is that got you, you want us to take, take off?
Cause this is a ten percent difference, it's not a five percent difference.
Cause last year we did, last year there was ten percent, if you look back at your notes from last year, we did this ten percent thing. She went in and added, and they're also every employee, it's every current employee and their positions and their salary. The system automatically did the math for us, so it's, it's not like the numbers are inaccurate. It may very well be the last year, because according to last year's budget, they only, the only budget for people who were here, there were positions that were vacant. And unfortunately, it were not included in last year's budget. The same thing across the board, that's so funny, just across the board. I think it's so hard to figure out, someone tell us why we did something that we did last year.
Went on last year, that's why our city man, we resigned with the finances in this year, we find ourselves, we got somebody to explain it in detail by detail. Which we did not have it like this, and it is killing. So in your mind, since you're questioning, what you want her to do, take it off?
There we go.
Gosh!
One thing we have to answer is, is we have four days. We have tonight and tomorrow, in which to adopt a budget in order to comply with the statutory requirements of cities. We can adopt a budget, and then we can all, and if we aren't spending that much, then we have it at the end of the year. However, we've got to, to have a budget when we leave here today. And if we set a budget, which we aren't going to, for fifteen thousand dollars, that doesn't mean we have to spend fifteen thousand dollars or fifteen billion dollars. We can set a budget, nine-point-two, nine-point-four, and just keep close tabs on how much the expenditures are each month. Um, knowing we can't spend more than nine-point-five billion or whatever it is, but we got to come out with a budget. And, you know, we, we can in the fall of the year, as push comes to shove, we can dig deeper into the weeds, but tonight, we didn't.
I know we need a budget, but I still have the right to question why.
I have a problem with that, but I do think we've got to come up with a budget, and she may not be able to fill you all of the answers that you would like to, to know. Or the answers may not be satisfactory.
My question is, is that's the five percent increase from last year, because you're adding five percent for overtime. It was only six-hundred-and-fifty thou, six-hundred-and-forty thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, ten percent is sixty-five thousand dollars, it's a seventy-four thousand dollar difference, and, and that one was budgeted for last year.
Well, there are, there have been some increases, adjustments, um, and I don't, I, I don't know, let me throw this out there, I don't know. I know that there was a four percent increase last year, maybe, did it increase, did y'all, the six-fifty, the figure that you have in there, did it include the four percent increase?
And the wage study that was done, so my question is, that was a, when people's salaries were increased after the wage study was done.
Things were done financially.
And I don't have to be.
That'd be a question, not one of them things. Anyway, I, I would use, never.
And every month, we take a look.
You have to sit there and not question nothing if you don't want to, but I got.
But we question, we have, you not know the one question.
I asked this question last time, I asked this question last time.
And she answered you last time.
Yes, yeah.
Not to go satisfied, this is it.
You're saying it's a five percent increase, but it's still not one line, I'm going to go to ten percent.
So, okay, with that, to answer you, is.
Where's the word, I'm gonna.
Okay, if she, if, if, if she is, if, what, what do you want to do tonight to, to get you straight? She done answered you that way, but it's, you still have a question. So let's, you know, let's, let's get into the solution, so that we can at least get us a budget. What do you need for that to, you know, what do you need?
And can I add, currently, we, we have expensed in the one-six-ten, one-on-one line, seven-hundred-and-six thousand dollars already. seven hundred and six thousand dollars already. And we still got to pay people through to the end of the month, right? So, you had a budget of six hundred and forty-nine thousand, but you've exceeded that budget already. So, either by, as we stated before.
Did you see that, Curtis?
We, we, we have, you, you have people who do overtime because you have shortages on crew.
No, we used to say, usually we would see that.
But what I'm saying, he, he has the thing from last year, because he's quoting that, he's been quoting. I'm saying, that's why I said, Curtis, but what she's telling you, we are already beyond whatever that is you, you from last year.
Just question each one of these. Sanitation is over eighty thousand dollars. If you went back in five percent, then that's only about from the three hundred, or she actually spent, not what was budgeted, but what was actually spent, three hundred seventy-one thousand for this year. It was, uh, three hundred seven.
To accommodate the ten thousand dollar salary increase, or inappropriate that, that might. But, uh, I, I'm still, I'm still going to ask. I'm still, because.
Never done much of an increase before, without someone getting the salary.
Because what now?
We never raised, the fees were never much of a change unless they were getting rates increases. And rate increases have changed, but now that I'm getting rates increases, then salaries are still way more than five percent.
Let's also remember, we were short, and we, and they had, but it was money being moved. I really was.
What, what I'm saying, okay, what, what I'm gathering, we are from last year's budget, from last year's, certain, listen, from last year's salaries, we are already over, overdue. We don't, we don't have enough money in the budgets to pay all of that.
Why not?
That's what I'm understanding.
Exactly.
Yeah, salaries and wages on sanitation is at three hundred and sixty-eight thousand now, and it was budgeted at three fifty-five.
And you ask, why not, because they spending, they spending more than the, than in the budget, that's what the problem is here.
That's the ten employees, isn't it?
That's the, um.
Isn't that the ten employees causing that?
Causing what? No, they're on their own line. Yeah, they're, our attempts are not included.
My question is, estimated this year to be finished at three seventy-one, which is over budget. But you're going to increase it more, increase it in eighty thousand dollars more. And then we'll, I mean, that's not a more addition.
So, do we see, in the salaries, in the department you're talking about, that's streets? That's what you're talking about right now, Curtis?
That was the sanitation.
Okay, in that, from what Curtis has pointed out, the salaries now, the salaries right now are the same. Are the same. So, they, so they were misbudgeted last year, that's the case.
I can't say.
See, something is not right. If this is what they're getting right now, and you are noticing that that is an increase.
It's an increase from the one they're actually paying. She's over budgeted this year. It was budgeted last year for sanitation. She's in sanitation, for example. Sanitation was budgeted three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars last year.
Yeah, but they spent.
Over budgeted this year, three hundred seventy-one thousand dollars, but they're going to put additional eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, now, so they're budgeted, you said last year they were budgeted a certain amount. And we are finding, and they, as the department head has come in and said, they are now over budget. They have spent more than they, that they have been budgeted there. Okay, so, how do you handle that? I know you're talking it, but see, you won't answer that. And my thing is, if this is, if this is the reality, but if this is the reality, that this is the salaries that they are being paid right now, which was budgeted last year, she ain't not paying her that. That's what they're getting. Show us what, so you know, it, I'm assisting the chairman, that it was misbudgeted last time. If this is what they're getting right now, that was done before. She has not increased it. Who has given them a increase?
It is increased. It's increased from where it was over budgeted last year, it's increasing additional. It's not one line, it was over eighty thousand dollars, that's what I'm asking you about.
Random is over budgeted, not the salaries.
The salaries.
Because, I'm saying, show me where that is. I can't get, I, I know, if she is telling you the, the mouse is up here now, is what the, what the people are actually getting. When was it over? It meant to me, it was done last year, it wasn't, it wasn't quite correct. What appears to be an increase, is this what they're getting? Now, maybe I'm, I, I just still. I don't, I don't, I, I simply can't get it, Curtis. I want to get, I want to understand where, where, where you are. When I'm thinking that every effort is being made here to make sure that we have some kind of balanced budget. And they're giving us as to what the actual expense is, actual of salaries and things, actual cost of things. But, but whatever we got here now, we, this is what is in existence now. Well, then, I don't know what, what it is, that you got to always compare. I don't know how you pick up, how you start one.
Can we bring out that sheet, miss?
That was after, I'll do it.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see. We.
It's all good. Do you understand the difference? Why, you're saying five percent.
I can't, I can't speak to what was done last year.
I'm not asking you to speak what's done last year. I'm asking you to speak the why. You said it's a five percent increase, but the number's coming out to be around ten percent.
No, I can't. I said it could be, was the four percent increase included in your budget? I asked that question, nobody responded, so I, I cannot tell you why it, it does.
It's yours, not theirs, not last year's. There are no evidence you have, it's a ten percent increase.
What number? That four, fourteen?
So, if you take the, I don't have it, you know, remember, I don't have it last year, so I'm trusting the mayor. But you take last year's actual number, spin up until this point, and divide it into the actual, or to the proposed budget of next year, right? Twenty-five, twenty-six, there's a ten percent difference for salaries, not five. And we're curious, why, when you're saying that a five percent pad put in there.
It's not a pad.
Let's, okay, don't use that word again. You said there's a five percent, there's a ten percent. And so, that's across the board, for all the salaries, and every budget line, right? So, what's the, what don't we understand?
I don't know. I can't tell you that. All I can do is start with what the number is, what everybody is being paid now, plus their longevity. Total it, and add five percent.
Okay, you said.
She's making on actual salaries. She wasn't here to do last year's budget. So, what would you like to do with last year's? Well, you keep comparing, you're saying that, but you keep comparing last year's budget to this year's budget, and saying that the numbers are not, are not matching.
It's the actual expenses, light item. So, it's the dollar amount that you spend on salaries for the last fiscal year up until whatever makes you poor. Well, let's just say it's today. And then you take that number, and you divide it by the budgeted proposed twenty-five, twenty-six number, and there's a ten percent discrepancy.
Are you also paying, but you also have to pay people, which she already explained. You still have another payroll coming up this month. You still have to pay people to the end of this month.
And you think that's going to get a five percent difference?
Be added into this number as well.
She's got that number on there, estimated for six, so that's not coming up.
Okay. By the way, at this point, we have been going over line by line for how many months? They started coming up?
It's changed every time.
I want to make sure, so that our government, that I, that we are still able to function, that our employees can still continue to get paid, that city services are not cut off, and there's not a city government shutdown. That we pass a budget, and if we have to make amendments, the law clearly allows for us to make any necessary amendments at any time we need to. We can, now that we have a full-time city manager, we can also have her bring us every month a report of expenditures, of revenues, so that we can indeed keep track of what's going on in our city, which is something that in the past, we haven't been getting like that. So, maybe going forward, Miss Hawkins, maybe every month, when we have a city council meeting, we can get a report of revenues and expenditures. Because I'd like to see us eventually get to the point of towns like Surfside, where every check and is posted on the website, so our citizens can, can see exactly where funds are going, that we can be transparent, and they don't have to call the offices looking for it. They can go to your website and look it up.
Mr. Gardner asks for that.
Yes, but we can go to the website and look that up, and we can keep track of that. But right now, we really and truly need to pass a budget, so that our citizens can continue to get their services.
All makes sense, all makes, all makes, all makes sense. Only problem is, is, is I don't have a, um, a budget right here. I can't see what, the expenses have been changed. I can't see what was actually spent last year. I can't see the proposal for this year versus what we budgeted last year. And so, you're asking me to vote, well, I thought that, you know, she's making changes, so you usually get an updated budget worksheet. And so, whenever I like to look at a budget, I'd love to be able to look at it before the meeting. And then I'd love to be able to sit here and line by line, and not have to look at a sheet from past year versus this sheet. And so, you're acting like it's something, a big issue for me, wanting to be able to see what we budgeted from one year to the other, before I vote on a budget for next year. And I'm just a little frustrated, because I'm having to look and ask questions, and allowing somebody else to tell me one number versus another. And we see discrepancies, and I can't even compare the discrepancies. I'm sorry.
Miss Hawkins, it's, we're estimated at six thirty.
I shouldn't have to bring my other budget. We've had two in the nine years.
Can I ask you a question? Can I ask you a question real quick?
Those have not been updated, that was all.
It's written. Can I ask you a question real quick, Miss Hawkins? The line items are estimated at six thirty, does that include, as long as items are over this budget here from what it was actually budgeted, so some of them are over, some of them are. Is that on salaries? Does that include there? Does that include overtime where they were?
Yes.
So, that's including overtime on estimated. So, my question is, is that estimated part compared to what we're adding five more additional percent to it, so that estimated part that we're estimating that they're all going to be paid this year, we're increasing it, some of them five, more than five, almost ten percent, and some of them even more above what the estimated that they're going to be paid through this year, which is included in their overtime, that we're not giving them off. I'm just saying, there's additional funds in here that I'm looking to see, can we cut without having to take three hundred thousand dollars out of the water? I think I have the right to ask. Y'all will sit here and just, when I'm asked, that's fine, but this is what our purpose is to be here. I don't know where to go. I could be here until Monday night.
It, it is not a problem. I don't, I don't, I, I don't like, prefer me like we don't want to ask questions, but we are. The question, the question, see, you cut, you want that? The, the, the questions you, you ask them, and it's, it's, it's over, but it's like you don't accept the answer. And that is, that, that is.
She didn't know the answer.
I didn't make the budget. I don't know how they figured the number, sir. I wasn't here.
I'm not worried about their number from time past. I'm asking you from six thirty, on this line item right here, where it says six thirty estimated.
That you just want to.
You told me that it's including five percent, but then you're also going.
I don't know what they budgeted.
You're going up additional five percent more than that, so on ten percent more. So, we're increasing it, it's including the, the overtime, plus an additional more than five, almost ten percent more for the salaries, so I don't understand why we have to go. Our salary's that high, and we can bring the budget back down a little bit, and then not have to take money from the water and sewer.
If you're a hundred and three and a hundred and eight percent going into your last month of your fiscal year, that tells you what you budgeted was not enough. Whether it be for the overtime, whether the overtime was in line or not, I don't know what the number was. I just thought ten percent was more than enough. But because the budget was tight, we, we made it five percent. I've already been told, Miss Hawkins, that's not enough overtime money for what we do, and what my guys got, you know, stay after work or come in the morning to take water or sewer, or general fund. You've, you've had people doing time and a half, sir, for payroll, if they're filling in for their, for their squad and short, short a person. Is that not right, chief? You pay them time and a half if you put them on.
Once, once they get to a certain hour, they turn in time.
So, when you're overtime, overtime is time and a half. And if they work a holiday, I think they get two, 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 two hours, two shifts for, for the, for the holiday. So, you, you have, there's a lot of variables there. I could, you know, if I could have put ten percent, I would have put the ten percent, because that's what they say they need. So, when, when Officer A don't work his regular shift, which would be in forty thousand dollars or whatever it is, but Officer B covers, covers that shift, it's not the same money per hour that Officer B would, would be charging to this line.
And they'll be, they'll be doing it this year, right?
I do believe it. And making it, unfortunately, without all the slots full, from what I understand. So, I, I stand by the, by the budget. I do believe it's a solid budget. But again, it's a plan. It's not written in stone, doesn't mean you can't change it, can't look at it again mid-year. If you have, I have, you know, we can, we can, we can wait all year long before changing, charging at two ninety-two, three fifty-four. You can wait all year until this time next year and say, hey, this is what general fund needs to balance. We won't take two ninety-two, we take a fraction of it. Whatever it is to keep, keep revenues over expenses, meaning you got more revenues than you have expenses, we can do that. I, I would offer you that. If you're not comfortable with that, you don't want to take anything from water to pay for the services that general fund has provided for decades, without them sharing in it, that's fine too. But I believe this budget is solid. I don't think there's any, there, there is no fluff in those, those salary lines, none. Because I took what we're paying now, who we have now, slots we have now. The only one I didn't take out, which if you want to take it out, is one slot in, in streets and sanitation, but because that's a, 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 a really, um, important service we provide, and we have to have CDL drivers, they're paid, the, the pay on this budget from last year, I don't think they put one or two people on there with a forty thousand dollar pay, because CDL drivers get paid more. And I'm not trying to holler, but I'm, I just feel, like, I, I've tried to answer the question in various ways, sir. I cannot tell you why the number is not the number, but I can tell you that they're over already. I could tell you that. And if, if, if that means that figure was not enough, either we had more overtime than we expected, or we didn't have any vacancies, and everybody worked the entire twelve months. And that's why I feel like this number is the best number. But it's up to you all. Y'all make the decision. If you want to cut, cut. Mr. Gardner, I apologize. The toner is out of the printer. We can't print. You, the, um, we, I sent the job, but nothing happened. But you can have this right here, it will show you.
But let me be clear as to what the, the discrepancy is here. You say that for the salaries, you, you only increase five percent.
It was not, okay, now, wait, wait, wait. I do need to address that. It's not a five percent increase.
Let me ask the question. My question simply is, whatever you have said, is the percent that you, um, put in for these salaries, Curtis, um, and, and, and Garner, uh, Ryan, have, any, for their calculation shows that it is a ten percent. Is that clear? That's all I want. Is that what, what this is about? Okay. Now, I don't see, but when she says she has taken what is being paid now. She didn't put these salaries. We did. We agreed on those salaries last year. Whatever they are now. And she, and according to her calculation, she only did five percent. That is a difference. I'm simply saying, simply saying. There has to be, and we know we're over budget. We know that, right? We do accept that, whatever reason, okay? That there has been something where we did not, there has been some changes. On the last year, not now. Cause she's only going on what is actual figures.
And there were some adjustments.
So there had to be some increases in salaries. To make her, her five percent of what the budgeted amount at last year. There had to be some increases during the year. For her calculations to be higher.
And we did.
Than the, what the budget from last year. Cause there during the year, there were some increases that has caused that. And that is what I want you all to acknowledge. That she is going with what is actual, not made up. Are not really increases besides that five percent or whatever she said. And let's kind of move on because we know, we have, Phil told us that.
I want to clarify, I want to clarify what you said is not what I'm saying.
Okay, well, that's what I said. I could never, I wanted to get.
I'm trying to explain to you that what was actually spent this year. Includes the five percent, the, the overtime pay. She's adding an additional five percent above that.
No, I didn't. No, I did not. I didn't start with that number.
You said the estimated amount that this, this year included overtime.
Overtime pay is paid at time and a half at one point.
May I, may I respond, please? Um, I don't, I don't know in any of the salaries and wages line how much of those budgets represented a overtime number. In fact, I said, wait, wait, in fact, I said, I didn't think it was budgeted at all. And administrative staff let me know, yes, we budget for overtime every year. I didn't start with that number. I don't start, I build a budget from zero. I start with every single line has to have on its own. You come up with an amount for that figure, not real, you, you, you can look historically, but I don't just take that line like some of the department heads did and add four percent. I take the salaries, I added them up. And I multiply the salaries by five percent to get an overtime amount to add to that line. That's how I did it. I didn't take what was last year and said time ten percent as y'all, I, I didn't do ten, I did five.
I want, you took five percent of what?
The total amount.
Total amount of what was spent this year?
No, I don't look at that. I took the salaries as they are, sir. I just showed it to you. I take the salaries as they are. Total that and multiply it by one hundred, one hundred and five percent. With five percent to get one hundred and five percent of the total. So if it's, um, for, let's say in, in this example, let's just use for an example. You have ten people who get paid forty thousand dollars, so that's four hundred thousand dollars. Do you agree? And you multiply that by five percent, that's twenty thousand dollars. So that's, the figure you see is four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It has nothing to do with last year's figure. I'm building that from zero up. Ten people making forty thousand dollars, five percent for overtime.
Well, my, my question is, and I asked you again, on all these salary lines.
Yes.
And they estimated at six thirty, what will spend this year?
That's what the system did. That's not, that's just what the system pulled.
That's higher, that's higher than what, than what we budgeted. Right now, you may not be, okay? It may come out to be that, may not come out to be.
Yes.
And thus, but then that, you're saying, and that was included their overtime pay. So if their overtime pay was included at that. Then we're still way higher than that number. We're a lot higher than the budgeted amount. And the estimated amount, what we estimated that we're going to spend, if we spend over, included their overtime. We're adding a lot more overtime into that in the following year. My question is, is it can be trimmed?
Okay, so are you looking at sanitation still? Is that the number you're looking at still?
I'll, I'll look at fire and some patients.
Okay, but just choose one for me. What, what, what salaries on rate line you want to look at?
Streets.
Streets, streets. All right, let me, we'll, we'll go over to streets.
Three hundred fifty-one thousand before she estimated that we're going to spend, it's going to include overtime.
And that, that is, that is what the system pulled.
But that includes.
Right now, it's at a hundred and fourteen percent at three hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. And it was budgeted for three oh three, nine seventy-one. But that's not a estimate. That's what it is through today, six twenty-five off the system today. Three hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. It's over by forty-three thousand dollars.
You're saying, Peter's saying we can go as high as three fifty-one. That's what it's estimated.
Yeah, if, if, if estimated would be, it could go up that much. Yes, sir.
Ten percent of that would be thirty-five thousand dollars.
Right. If you look back and spend.
From three fifty-one to four oh one. And the three fifty-one, as I'm trying to explain it, already includes overtime. And so if we're taking the three fifty-one and go up another ten percent, that's thirty-five, we're going up more than ten percent of that, we're going four oh one. That's more than ten percent, so you're, you're going up ten or fifteen, I don't have a calculator, we run second to go. If we're going up even more and it already included overtime pay in there.
Right.
So we're, we're.
You also.
Say for double digits. Your overtime, your pay, you're, you're budgeting for more overtime pay than, than I feel like there needs to be, than we need to budget.
Okay.
So, okay, let me see where you at. This three, okay, I'm just kind of rounding off. This is three fifty-five, three sixty-two last year. And, and that you're saying that included ten and overtime, ten percent.
The, the three hundred.
The three hundred, three fifty-five, three sixty-two salary. Is that what we talked about?
Uh, we were on streets, but I'm with you.
Well, let's say sanitation.
Three hundred twenty-two thousand is what we budgeted.
Oh, you want to go over here to the end, three twenty-four. I see. I'm going to say budget.
Possibly three fifty.
I'm looking at, are we looking at on this sheet right here to say three fifty-five, three sixty-two? For sanitation and trash.
For streets.
He's doing streets. Look at the page, turn, turn it up.
Report of streets.
Turn, turn the whole paper.
The street we went to, three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars.
So which one where, three oh three, three forty-seven?
That's what I see. What number you're getting at three twenty-two, sir?
On the streets, the harbor, our salaries are way under twenty-four, twenty-five A C T.
Oh, now, I also, uh, Mayor, I was mentioning to you that that number was pulled in May. So you can't really use that, so if we get.
Well, so we were budgeted three oh three.
Yes.
Okay. But we're going to go up as high as three fifty-one possible.
Yes.
Okay. And the three fifty-one, if we do go up to that point, would include, is what I'm trying to explain, would include overtime pay. If with overtime, they go overtime pay, somebody's out, they got all that. It's like a blitzkrieg, okay? And they're over. But you're going to budget now, an additional go up to four oh one, which would be a ten percent would be thirty-five thousand dollars. And it's at fifty thousand dollars, so we take a, you know, more than ten percent, fifteen percent.
Exactly.
So. So I'm saying there's a lot of extra overtime budgeted in there that could come out.
I, I disagree. I disagree. Okay, I want to get into what was done before, but I did see this. I want y'all to look at it.
I'm worried about the number four.
Um, I can't, I can't explain it anymore than I, I've done it. It is the, it's the number. It's, that's the number. But maybe, maybe this might be, I don't know.
I just want to look at, I want to see what number.
Every one of these people don't have a, a number in there.
Oh, they were included in that.
So, and then that, then those, but those amounts are not right. It's less than four, it's about three thirty-nine. Those amounts are not right. And I, I don't know what else to tell you about, uh, what, why that number is different.
And I do know that it's more than what it is now, what was budgeted.
It was over, John.
I have questions related to how you build a budget.
Okay.
Y'all just believed everything that John, hang on.
You're looking at general fund revenue? Or you're looking at saying we need nine, be a two hundred and fifty-five thousand.
He did say two. And he has the things that he's recommended we have not done. So now you got somebody who's trying to do it, that's killing you. Now you can stop, cause this first griddle, even we build it, people so frustrated. About salaries and how you wet on it, I'm like crazy. I mean, they have things that you need to see, but y'all want to separate it, go with the foolishness.
And my next question is, when we. Budgeted, which we talked about in the year's budget. Yeah, two, nine twenty-six, here we got projected revenue and two seventy-five. I was just wondering what happened between.
I'd be glad to, um, answer that for you, um, Council. Um, we got the money from the county.
What, what do we answer that to your question?
Yeah, I was asking her, there was a, a figure used of projected revenue, um, of nine, nine point two million. And, um, point two six two. And then in, in what we have, projected revenue on what's been sent to us is like nine point two seven five zero three three. So we got a little bit of difference and I was just wondering. Where the difference came from for what was in the public notice versus what we are actually dealing with tonight.
Because of the timing of the public notice, we had to pull the trigger so we can meet the date before the third month. When I did the public notice, I was trying to balance and as you know, we were about seven hundred grand out at one point. Y'all recall that? Even with the two ninety-two, we're still out. Once we got the, actually got the money in from the county. Um, and based on that number and what's supposed to happen with the FLO. That amount was five sixty, but we got eight something, eight seventy-nine. So Ms. Benson and I agreed, we couldn't really go to nine ninety-one, which is probably the, the actual right now. But we, we need to go conservative because those FLO amounts will start dropping. So I, I, I told you I wasn't going to really count on it until we got it. We did get it. We also got some funds from the Midland School Association, the distribution. So we upped some of those numbers. So that some of the numbers did move like Mr. Gardner noted. Uh, and I felt more secure in doing more in revenues. Than to do what I didn't want to do, which is appropriate fund balance. So with these, we don't have to, um, appropriate fund balance. And again, I offer, if you want to, um, we can wait to the end of the year to do a transfer. Uh, and if we, if I have a support and, and the, uh, departments. Do exceptionally well on their budget, I would say we would use those again for capital items like cars and things like that.
Let me ask you this question. Looking at that same page. We're dealing with needing ninety-five, eighty-seven, one eighty-seven towards balance. So I'm assuming our expenditures are ninety-five, eighty-seven, one eighty-seven. Are you saying we need a transfer of two ninety-two, one fifty-four, whatever that number is?
That's that general fund directed services.
That, that's.
It's going to be added on to one of these lines. Y'all should have read. Or transfer, whichever one it is.
There would have to be a transfer. But if we handle our budget and if we find, we fuss at you later about whether you can do math or not. But if we find that we are not spending this money. We can carry it forward or we can put it in, um, capital funds or we can do other things with it and we don't have to spend it.
And I, I have been told that at one time the city had a general fund capital. But we, we really need to do that. Um, if you think about it, with that two ninety-two, over a period of four years, it's a million, over a billion dollars. And if all cash is not dead, we just pay for what we need. And, and put it in a motion like, you know, replacing a car at the end of their life, you know? A car for me or a car for staff, I should say. Versus a car for the police, different, different timeline, okay? Depending on how well we keep it, when they reach, I think, a hundred and fifty thousand miles at the end of their life with a patrol car.
That, that's true, yes, ma'am.
Whereas I, I've, I've had a car that had three hundred thousand miles on it and, and was going to keep on going, but nothing's happened. So with that, that could be a plan as to how we can get some things replaced, if you will. Did I answer a question, Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, I mean, we still hit back to the point where I need to have a budget passed tonight. And I, I understand the nature of the questions, but after the last hour. I don't think I can get a resolution as to why there's a difference between those tonight, those figures. But I do know that we can't spend any money on salaries, et cetera. Beyond what we have agreed to pay people. So I'm, I'm open for people to continue to ask questions, but at some point fairly soon, I'm just going to make a motion. Pass the budget and add a transfer of two hundred and ninety-two, whatever, to it. And then get back into the weeds in Ju- in July, August, September, when one of our work sessions, we can get back into it.
Good job. I suck at that.
So then we're clear, now you're, you're also raising the sanitation fees also?
Yes, and it will feature a twenty-eight percent increase on commercial dumpsters, not the grow cars. Those are ones provided by, um, service provided by C W S, um, twenty-eight percent and that is included.
The residents will be seeing a two and a half dollars from the water side, two and a half from the sewer side.
An increase.
Five dollar total.
Each month.
Flat fee increase.
To the flat fee, yes. But we do need to look at possibly implementing a, um, a rate change based on water usage. Uh, I think you only have like three, you have like three rates, but you can do more rates. And the system can handle that and, and deal that. So if you're at five thousand, well, someone at ten is paying the same amount. And that might can be a differentiation to keep you from not using as much. But that makes us not be able to bill as much too. So there is a, uh, uh, association, uh, the Rural Water Association, they, they have done some studies for us. And I'd like for y'all to take a look at it at some point.
Is there any point in time where, um, Council, uh, the Council can get a raise?
I think you want, I best come up, I believe the answer is you, you can't give yourself a raise, you give the next one. But I can look into it. I'll, I'll ask Mr. Barron to, to confirm that.
I've both heard what it's creased, it's a new right here. Uh, but you know, I'm a retired, I'm going to say. Uh, you know, I'm a retired, I'm going to set it and go, I need a raise.
We can do a raise anytime, it's just won't go until the next election.
Yeah, the next election. You vote for it now, November election, you know, happening after the November election.
No, exactly, yeah.
You got time.
Anyway.
Now, is our water and sewer, um, budget going to be the three billion, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars?
I, I apologize, I don't have to step in your head anymore.
Okay, Mr. Turner, agree?
Three five five one.
That's the order, we did not, we published our general fund without our order.
I noticed that, yes, yes, sir, I just did what was done before, yes, sir. But normally I do all, all the, um, major funds. And I was told y'all don't actually do it, I'm not going to say that, we'll talk about that.
I'm still saying we'll move two hundred ninety-two thousand.
Y'all agree, yes, sir, I do believe that's fair.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I am making a motion that we approve the twenty-five, twenty-six budget for Dartlington, that being ordered number.
How about all of a sudden?
Zero, twenty twenty-five dash zero two. In the amount of nine million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And the four line item under the general fund of four nine nine X, where it says transfer of all the funds that we are transferring two hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars from Iowa.
One, so, but it's not a transfer.
Correct, sir.
It is for direct services. It's like, I hire you to do accounting for me, you send me an invoice, I send you, you send me an invoice, I pay you. That's how that is. It's not going to be just some money going over there. So that's why I said there's going to be a line item in the budget as an expense. Got to move it out of other operating and this, you actually see it. And if we need to, you might say, well, let's not check, let's not transfer, do half of it, that's fine. Um, I just saw it as a way to make it be fair because of the services we do provide, um, from a man and from y'all's time and, and as, as much as we talk about general fund issues, we talk about water supply and stormwater and all those others. So, um, and that calculation can be massaged later. Um, I think it should be around three fifty, but, uh.
It would be up to two ninety-two, one fifty.
Up to, yes, sir.
Two ninety-two, one fifty. And I think we have a separate motion.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
You don't see an order, separate ordinance on the fourth, but I'm assuming we get the twenty, twenty-five dash zero two water and sewer department. Uh, make a motion that we approve a budget of three million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for that water and sewer side.
I'll second.
Correct me if you're mistaken. No. Well, the meeting, Saturday, June the twenty-eighth, Freaking Fest, this Saturday at four o'clock. Tuesday, July the first, uh, City Council, regular meeting at six o'clock. July the sixteenth to the twentieth, uh, this year is the Municipal Association Annual Meeting. Phil, hit. Phil, have a question to your.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn. I'll second.